All right, good morning and half a day. The Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, October 30th. The time now is 10 o'clock. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and accommodating the Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notice for this public hearing or disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, October 22nd and Wednesday, October 28th. The bill that will be entertaining this morning is Bill Number 383-35-COR, introduced by Senator Sabina Flores Perez, an act to add a new chapter 105 to Division 3 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated relative to the creation of the seller disclosure statement to the real estate the dealer's law. General rules of conduct of our hearing. This Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and we unmute all Zoom participants until called upon. Members of the committee and/or noncommittee members wishing to speak may indicate the desire to meet through the in-app chapter. Well, there's only two other colleagues here, so it'll be easy. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Committee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Question and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the bill, which is Bill 383-35. Personal influence as to the character or the motive of any sender or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of the general rule of conduct will result in the removal from the public hearing by my house. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in other activities during the hearing. But if you're having a drink or anything, please feel free to drink. And if you're having a snack, hopefully it's not a full meal and we'll be okay with that. And failure to maintain visibility may cause your removal from the meeting livestream. Like that laws, my colleagues today, and we have the author Senator Sabina Perez, and we have minority leader Senator Telo Tydley. Thank you for participating in this hearing today. I want to ask Senator Sabina Perez to give her opening statement on Bill 383-35. Ma'am?
This is Massey, Mr. Speaker. So thank you for this opportunity and hosting this public hearing. Bill 383-35 introduced by me Senator Sabina Flores Perez seeks to create a mandate and mandate a seller's disclosure statement presented to potential buyers of residential properties. By adding the seller's disclosure statement mandate to the law, Bill 383-35 aims to protect potential buyers from unforeseen problems and costs, create a fairer real estate market and provide a transparent purchasing process for home buyers. Bill 383-35 is a culmination of efforts of the Guam Real Estate Commission. Chris Murphy is here and he did a lot of work with that, Alice Sebastian and other members of the commission, who sought input from key stakeholders over several years prior to its approval in January of 2020. Currently, Guam residential properties are sold as-is, which can potentially leave home buyers with unexpected unbudgeted costs, create an unlevel playing field within the real estate market, reduce home values due to the perception and uncertainty of potential material defects, and increase the liability for brokers who may not know and who do not disclose material defects of properties. Nationally, almost two-thirds of all complaints filed against the real estate licensees involve the lack of disclosure of material defects on properties. Bill 383-35 requires sellers of residential real estate properties to provide a seller disclosure statement that fully discloses all material facts, past and present, relating to the residential real property being offered for sale that are within the knowledge or control of the seller and can be observed from visible accessible areas. The material facts are to include but not limited to the condition, presence, and type of the following: electrical, plumbing, sewer-inseptic, cooling, water, wastewater systems, the condition of the land, structural conditions, environmental conditions, infestation, fungi, mold, equipment and appliances included in the sale, legal issues affecting title, stigmatized events, and others. This also applies to condo unit owners with respect to their unit only, not the shared facilities. A seller's disclosure statement should not be construed as a substitute for any expert inspection, professional advice, or warranty that the buyer may wish to obtain. Conversely, any expert inspection report shall not substitute as a seller's disclosure statement. Bill 383-35 would require that the seller's disclosure to be delivered no later than 10 days from the acceptance of the purchase contract. Upon receipt, the buyer has 10 days to examine the statement and either accept and proceed with the purchase or reject and rescind the purchase contract. This time period for review of the disclosure statement would provide an opportunity for the potential buyer to have material defects corrected and their price adjusted accordingly. Additionally, Bill 383-35 would limit the statute of limitations for court action for one year if the buyer received the disclosure statement and two years if no disclosure statement was provided. It's surprising to find that our local laws don't have existing protections for residential buyers and navigating the purchasing process for the first time, home buyers, is difficult. And I can only imagine the difficulty of navigating the purchasing process for the first time, owing to fine structural, electrical issues in their new home after moving in. And with the current state of our island, every penny in our pocket counts. Unforeseen circumstances affecting the structural integrity of a home or plumbing or electrical can be devastating to a potential home buyer. And Bill 383-35 would satisfy the need for transparency in order for potential buyers to fairly consider purchasing a home. Bill 383 creates a level playing field for all parties involved in a residential real estate transaction. Purchasing a home is a significant large purchase and one of the most important investments families make. And this piece of legislation is a step in the right direction by helping our people avoid potentially bad purchases. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you. Looking forward to the testimonies.
Thank you Senator Perez. I'd like to also recognize the folks that have joined us today. Oh, we have Senator Mary Camacho Torres. Thank you Senator. We also have, on the Zoom, we have Mr. Christopher Murphy, the chairman of the Guam Real Estate Commission. We have Claire Delgado, the president of GAR, the Guam Association of Realtors. We have Ms. Gina Campus from RE/MAX Diamond Realty. And we have Ms. Liz Duñez from RE/MAX Realty. And I'd like to begin with Mr. Murphy, the instigator of this bill. No, I'm just kidding, Chris. But you did a good job. Thank you for helping Senator Perez because this is something we look forward to. Mr. Murphy, if you can please maybe give your comments on the bill.
Okay, half a day. Thank you Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. It's been a long time coming. And I'd like to say hello to all the distinguished senators who've joined us in this hearing. And first of all, I want to make sure that all of you distinguished individuals are safe and sound with your families during these challenging times. I know it's difficult for all of us and I appreciate the time you're giving us. The Guam Real Estate Commission would like to submit testimony in strong support of Bill 383-35. Unlike almost every jurisdiction throughout the United States, Guam does not have any consumer protection laws related to seller disclosure on transactions involving the sale of residential real estate. A Guam real estate seller disclosure law is long overdue and will create a more level playing field among buyers and sellers of residential real estate within our island community. As a real estate industry continues to mature, develop, and adapt to changing conditions surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic, a seller's disclosure law becomes increasingly important and essential to protecting buyers who are unable to personally inspect properties or must work on a virtual basis to purchase a home. The concept of homeownership as part of the American dream is very much alive and well. Our island community has deep roots in land and we understand that homeownership is the cornerstone of a strong community. It is imperative that we as a community continue to encourage, develop, and protect the opportunities for homeownership, which in turn will improve the overall quality of life for all of our residents. Purchasing a home is probably the largest investment the average person will make during his or her lifetime. And if you're like many of us, you may not be a real estate expert with the ability to ensure that you're getting the best possible deal. In fact, unlike the majority of jurisdictions throughout the United States, Guam real estate transactions are based on the concept of caveat emptor, or let the buyer beware. This concept places an undue burden on prospective buyers who may not be real estate experts to conduct their own detailed inspections and investigations of property they are considering to purchase without the benefit of firsthand knowledge from the seller. Residential real estate contracts typically employ the concept of caveat emptor by including the phrase "sold as-is", which in the seller's mind relieves him or her from acknowledging, addressing, or fixing material defects or issues associated with the property they are selling. Just think for a moment, you're a first-time buyer and you've saved every nickel and dime so that you can make the necessary down payment on your dream home. The owner is aware of a structural defect in the roof, but the sales contract states that the house is being sold as-is. The house looks okay to you, so you close on it and move in. One month later, during a heavy rain, the roof starts leaking above your living room. You have a contractor come out the next day to look at the roof. He tells you there is a major structural problem that will cost $30,000 to fix. You don't have the money needed for the repairs and you call a seller, if they're still around, to ask them why didn't they tell you about the crack in the first place? They indicated, "Sorry, we sold it as-is." What started out as a lifelong dream has now turned into an extended and costly nightmare for the new property owner. Now, by no means am I stating that all sellers are deceptive or try to sell their homes without disclosing material facts. However, the lack of a seller's disclosure law provides the opportunity to do so and the general public should be provided with the necessary safeguards to avoid this scenario from ever happening when they are ready to purchase their home. The central focus of this proposed law is a requirement that all owners disclose any material fact or defect associated with the property they are selling. The key being that the material fact or defect is within the knowledge or control of the seller and that said factor defect can be observed visibly in accessible areas. The law defines a material factor defect as any factor defect or condition, past or present, that would have an adverse impact on the perceived value of the property being sold. The most appropriate way to promote a level playing field in the buying and selling of residential property on Guam is through the adoption of a seller disclosure law. A well-drafted law will address several aspects of the typical residential real estate transaction. First and foremost, it will protect the general public from unscrupulous sellers who try to hide material defects or issues affecting the property they are selling. Second, it will provide potential buyers with appropriate and meaningful information on the residential property they are considering to purchase. This in turn will allow the buyer to be more informed and speed up the overall sales process by providing key information upfront and early on the transaction. Thirdly, a seller's disclosure law will provide real estate licensees and owners with an excellent marketing tool to help sell their property in a timely and professional manner. It will allow the seller to sell the property on an as-is basis subject to disclosed material facts and information. And finally, it will reduce the liability of real estate licensees who represent owners that try to hide or mislead prospective buyers with respect to material issues affecting the property being negotiated for sale. Now, one might say that a seller's disclosure law puts an undue hardship on a seller to disclose information on their property. The proposed law does not require a seller to hire third-party professionals or spend any money on locating or researching possible material facts that are currently not visible or unknown to the seller. It merely requires the owner to disclose any material fact, past or present, that they are actually aware of. In summary, a seller's disclosure law will serve both the buyer and the seller in a transaction by giving the buyer needed information to make an informed decision on whether or not to buy the property and strengthen the seller's sale on an as-is basis by disclosing material information to the buyer that the buyer cannot later dispute. A seller's disclosure law is not meant to replace any expert inspection or professional advice that a buyer may wish to obtain, but it does provide the buyer with important information early on the home buying process that may or may not affect his or her decision to purchase the property. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration with Bill 383-35. We need to ensure that all of our island residents are provided with the necessary information to form decisions on the biggest investments they make during their lifetimes. And approval of this bill will go a long way to making that a reality in the future. I appreciate the time to present our testimony.
Thank you, Chris. We have Ms. Claire Delgado that has also submitted written testimony. And maybe Claire, you could read your testimony, please.
Thank you Senator. Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Guam Association of Realtors, we want to comment on Bill Number 383-35. The Guam Association of Realtors fully supports a seller's disclosure. Having the owners disclose pertinent facts about a property is necessary for prospective buyers to make informed decisions. The accuracy of the property information is also vital when listing a property for sale. Perspective buyers need to know as much about a property as its seller is able to disclose. As advocates of homeownership, we agree with the need to give consumers the necessary information about a home they are interested in. As Chris had mentioned, buying a home is probably one of the biggest investments in someone's life. So this will further add to their peace of mind because there is only so much a buyer can learn from a survey, a title report, pest inspection, home inspection, and the like. This bill will serve as a tool for buyers to be better prepared from the moment they close a home to lessen the surprises when they are handed the keys to their new home. This will also give the sellers the opportunity to pass on their knowledge and the history, excuse me, both good and bad, to the potential buyer. Information such as any decimate happened on the home, repairs that have already been done, pest issues that have been dealt with, and anything else a seller would like to make sure a buyer is aware of. This will help the seller sell their home potentially faster and eliminate buyers who cannot afford potential repairs, if any, and who would otherwise cancel a transaction due to the property's history after finding out after the fact. While there may be situations where a seller may not be aware of apparent or any underlying conditions, the seller's disclosure form provides the opportunity for a seller to report what they know and what they don't know. We did want to add on suggestions, which I, you know, as far as the verbiage, one suggestion that we would like to add may possibly change on Section 105-118 from any person to the seller, so that way we know that the seller is clear. Additionally, attaching a proposed seller's disclosure form so it can be easily referenced. And lastly, one suggestion is the agreement of the transfer definition should also refer to an actual purchase agreement. And that's something that we hope we can continue conversations so that way we can get the verbiage to where it's beneficial for everyone. From a Realtor's perspective, we have to follow a strict code of ethics which separates real estate agents from Realtors. We support a seller's disclosure because it is the right thing to provide to any potential buyer. As Realtors, we have a duty to our clients to provide as much information as possible to make sure all parties are informed and protected. And with that, Senator, I thank you for the opportunity to provide our comments on this bill.
Thank you Claire. We also have Gina Campus and we also have Liz. So we'll start with Gina. Did you want to make any comments to the bill, ma'am, before?
No Senator, thank you. The Guam Association of Realtors has reviewed this document and they find it to be acceptable. And I'm just here to participate with the forum.
All right, thank you Gina. Liz, Ms. Duñez, do you have anything you wanted to contribute to this bill?
I just want to say, yes, thank you Chris for bringing this forward. It's about time. I support it along with the Guam Association of Realtors. Just so you know that we've been working on the seller's disclosure form since the 1996, '97, '98 in that period of time when Rose Hunt was president. So we've been working on a seller's disclosure, but every time we tried to put it forward, it was brought up that there was no seller's disclosure law. So each time we took a step forward, we had to take two steps back. So now that we're looking at moving this bill forward, the Guam Association can review the form that the seller has to complete to ensure that it reflects the condition of the property and that the information and history of the property is provided and then we can provide that to the buyer. So Chris, thank you. It's about time.
All right, thank you. Thank you Liz. I have my colleagues. Senator Sabina Perez, would you like to ask them any questions? Otherwise, I think only the one amendment, and I'll be talking to you offline on that one so we can tweak the bill before we kick it out of committee. Senator Perez.
No questions at this time. Thank you to Chris Murphy for spearheading this. I think you mentioned it took three years plus perhaps in working with a lot of the community and the stakeholders to get a consensus. And you know, it's a win-win situation for our community and the industry as well. So this is Massey. And no questions.
All right, thank you Senator Telo. Do you have any questions? You're followed by Senator Mary Camacho Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. And you know, I'd like to thank Chris Murphy as well, you know, bringing this to Senator Perez's attention. I know you've been working on it for quite some time, but I have to commend Senator Perez for actually doing the job and making it happen. So I'd like to also request that I be a co-sponsor on this legislation and appreciate all the work that Senator Perez has done to push this through. So the more co-sponsors we get, the better chance it gets on the agenda. So again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak and appreciate all that are here today to testify in favor of this legislation. Thank you.
All right, thank you Senator Telo. Senator Mary?
I want to note that I appreciate this piece of legislation because I was one of those buyers who bought an as-is property. And after the fact, I literally cried when I understood the scope of what I had bought and how it took about four months of renovation and just to get the property habitable. So truly, we must know what we are in for when we buy property, especially when it's very costly to remedy it, to get it to a point where it's habitable, especially as a residence. But the only question I had is, where are you disclosed to the best of your knowledge? Is that typically offset by the physical inspection? So in other words, if someone does not disclose someone, something, or should have known but doesn't disclose, is it easy enough to spot those things upon inspection by the buyer and maybe the Realtor handling the transaction?
So that question for...
Maybe to Mr. Murphy. Is it easy enough if a seller doesn't disclose for you to pinpoint where there is potentially a problem just by physical inspection?
Yeah, the whole thrust of the law is that it's within the control and knowledge of the seller. And it's visible. So if you walk around your building and you see water stains on the bottom of your wall, then that would be something that would raise a red flag. But the seller's disclosure is really meant to provide additional information that the owner of the property has experienced. And you know, they have the history with the property that they can relay on to the proposed buyer. But it does not, as we said, supplement getting a home inspection. More and more people on Guam are, you know, especially first-time buyers, are getting home inspections by third-party professional home inspectors. And these are the people that will go out and they'll review the structural, the plumbing, the electrical, and then they'll come back with a detailed report on those items in terms of, you know, if they need repair, replacement, or if they're in good condition. So it's meant to work in conjunction, but a lot of times inspectors don't know the history of the house. And maybe the owner knows, like the story I gave you, that was a true story of someone I dealt with, that they didn't know that there was a structural issue on the roof and it started leaking and they had no way of paying for the, you know, the repairs on it. But if they had, from the, then they might have not have made that purchase to begin with. Or they could have used that as a negotiating tool with the owner to say, hey, look, I'll buy it if you repair it, or I'll buy it if you reduce the price by the amount that would cost me to repair it. So it's really there to give upfront information that's a result of the history as known by the seller.
Thank you. And the fact that everyone from the Realtors Association was favorable convinces me that this is very sound as well. So thank you very much. I have no further comments.
All right, thank you Senator Mary. You know, I have no other, I truly don't have any questions other than thank you, Chris, for your involvement in this. Like I mentioned, you're the instigator of this bill and that's great. And Liz mentioned that they've been working on this since the 90s. But yes, I'm one buyer that I had to do some renovations to a home I bought that was at least over 10 years old. But there were things that, gosh, I wish I knew, but that's okay. I still wanted to buy it. I bought it. And with this seller disclosure, this is great information. I mentioned this earlier, Senator Perez, that it's almost like they have in the states, we have that car fax. Before you buy the car, you get to know if they've been in any insurance claim, any accidents, anything happened to that car before you buy it, so that you're not buying a lemon. And it's similar to, I would say, similar to this bill is to prevent new homeowners from buying a lemon home. Buying a home that it's got a septic tank problem, it has a... The walls are about to fall apart and they just cover it up by painting it. And then they were able to go back to the seller and say, wait a minute, you sold me a dud. You didn't reveal this. And maybe this law would help them and protect the owner so that their dream home is not their dream nine-year. And I look forward to this bill. And then when we get to the floor, then I'll ask, like Senator Telo, we ask to be co-sponsors because as the oversight for housing, I love to make sure we protect everybody in the housing industry and it supports the industry across the board. Thank you. Senator Sabina, if you'd like to make closing statement and then we can wrap it up. This is going to be, should be an easy bill to close the committee report and get it ready for session.
Remember session, right? Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to add, you know, the work was done was very thorough. And you know, Chris Murphy did such a thorough job, even there's a section in the bill as far as non-liability of the seller in regards to disclosure. And basically, you know, the seller did not have any knowledge of it. You know, that relieves them of the liability. I think also if it's believed to a reasonable belief that the matter was corrected, that also relieves their liability. But there's also something interesting in regards to seller disclosure statements. So you know, the inspection doesn't substitute the disclosure statement. That's important to note. And you know, I think, and like what Senator Sinogecin said, that you know, there's some things, and Chris Murphy had said that some things the owner may know the history of the house that an expert inspector does not know or may not catch. So yeah, definitely, an inspector's report does not supplant the disclosure statement. And there is one part, it was so thorough in the bill that they even include stigmatized property. And you know, that can include, you know, you know, what happened with during the house, perhaps, you know, if there was murder, suicide, serious crime, drug activity, proximity to sex offenders, and even paranormal activity. So this was also included in, you know, included in the disclosure statement. This is something that would be included in the disclosure statement as well. And I also want to point out the fact that if an occupant had AIDS or has HIV, that is protected because that's under the fair housing law. So there are areas that are protected, that are safe from disclosure or must be protected from disclosure. And this bill makes a clear distinction between, you know, you make sure those are safeguarded. So yes, this bill was very thoroughly worked out. And so, yeah, and all the efforts and work is included in this bill. So I do want to thank, on that note, I do want to thank Chris Murphy for spearheading this over the years. over the years. And like he said, it's long overdue and it's a win-win situation for our our community, for those that are purchasing their home. You know, it's an investment they'll make in their lifetime, probably the the largest investment they'll make in their lifetime. And especially now when the dollars need to go further. It protects also, it also supports a fair real estate market. And so this is something that, yeah, I'm committed to supporting and getting on the floor and for passage. And I want, I'm going to definitely include Senator Telo Tite DeGui and Senator San Augustine as my co-sponsors, and I welcome and Senator Torres and anyone who wants to to support this bill. So Sisuz Massey, and we are, yeah, are willing to accept more testimonies and we'll make the corrections as needed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Perez. There being no additional, no one else to testify on this bill, the committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days. We just give it a few days. It's a pretty easy bill, pretty simple and straightforward. And please submit your testimony to Senator Joe Essenogstein at gmail dot com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending the virtual public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. The virtual public hearing is now adjourned. It is ten thirty-one. Wow, record time. Stay safe. Wash your hands, wear a mask, and practice social distance. And Sisuz Massey to all, please enjoy and be safe. We don't know what the storm is coming. Okay? Take care. Have a nice day.
Thank you, everybody. Bye. Be safe.